For the meeting to order for the Conica County Council, a budget session for Tuesday, May 14, 2019. First item on the agenda is the Administration Executive, gentlemen.
Good morning, Weston.
Hey, good morning, Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration.
Good morning, Michelle Ennis.
Position?
Director of Finance.
Okay, the executive administration budgets on page forty-three of the budget document, Okay, to begin?
Sure.
Okay. The proposed fiscal twenty executive budget is a little over $5,000 less than fiscal year nineteen's budget, and I'm gonna go by sections and be willing to take any questions you have. Are, starting with salaries for our department, our salaries is going up $46,014, to be specific. The majority of that is we have put funding for the Public Information Officer back in as well as two percent COLA. And as we all know, the county is not the best at getting out the good things we're doing, and we feel that this position will help bring a better message, a consistent message coming from the county. So we are asking for the Public Information Officer position to be funded. Going to benefits.
Is there a question, Weston?
Yeah, sure.
You have also a position here as Budget Officer?
Yes, that is shown, but it is not proposed being funded this year.
And I guess the question is, has that posi-- how long's that position been there? And has it ever been funded before? Is it a vacancy, or is it a new position that's just never been filled?
Sure, it's my understanding that that position was created last year, but has not been funded whatsoever.
And what would the role of that individual be?
What we found, and we see it in larger municipalities and counties, finance and budget are separate entities. They're in different roof, under different roofs, they're provide checks and balances. This would be one who can dig into numbers for us, help put the CIP together. I've put the CIP painfully, painstakingly this year, and it takes a lot of time and effort, and it would be helpful to have somebody that can quickly query things for us, as well as analyze things such as, you know, with the latest Board of Ed discussions, better understanding their CIP. They have a ten-year CIP, and if we had somebody who can quickly turn around those numbers for us to help us better understand our budget and our spending to date versus, and then also looking at other entities we work with. So that's, that was the point behind the position, but going through our budget deliberations, we chose not to fund it this year.
How does that come into play with the Finance Department?
I would think in an ideal situation, it would be a counter to the Finance Department. It would be a counterbalance, rather, is probably a better way of describing it. They would help put together the budget, whereas Finance could then focus on accounts receivable, accounts payable, and the accountant side of the house, whereas the budget development, the CIP development, as well as any detailed analysis we need. In most cases, Wayne and I are doing a lot of those calculations to figure out, okay, what are the spending differences year over year, or actual values, as you can see this budget touches on the last several years of actuals. We think that position, and again, it's not being proposed to be funded in fiscal year twenty, but we think that would be helpful to our department overall.
Yeah, I mean, I look at that, and at face value, it seems like it may make sense, but then, you know, my first question was, is this something that this individual would be doing year-round, because your department heads alone usually are dealing with their budgets year-round?
Sure.
And this is only, you know, as far as orchestrating the budget and CIP as a whole, I don't know if that's a, you know, three hundred and sixty-five days a year job for somebody, but again, that's why I ask, because I'm not quite sure what it might entail, as opposed to what Finance and all the individual department heads do on a regular basis.
Understood, and what we would do if we were proposing to fund it is provide all that backup information. Is it a part-time position? Is it a full-time position? What the duties would be?
Okay.
And justify the full-time equivalency of the position if we were to fund it. Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If you may, can I just clarify one thing?
Thank you.
Are you looking, Weston, to actually add this position to the Paying Classification Plan, or is it still being shown as a possibility?
If we haven't added it previously, I think we should add it just so it's there next year, if we decide to fund it then, or the year after. That may be more of a HR question than...
Historically, since 2008, all new positions have been created by separate legislation. So if that's something that you guys want to do, then we would need to get someone to draft a legislative bill to add that position.
Okay, we can discuss internally and, you know, put a bill forward if that's...
Ben, it's not funded, there's no need to spend a lot of time on it from what I'm gonna ask, but you say you looked at the larger counties. I mean, the larger counties, are you talking about counties with a budget air size? Or are you talking about counties like Montgomery, or Prince George's, Anne Rundle, or stuff like that? I mean...
Yeah, well, it's just as entities, municipal entities get bigger, you see that. Now, whether or not that falls for us, we weren't proposing a full department, a full budget department. We were starting one role, and then that person may need an assistant.
I mean, it seems like we've done this for so many years, the way we're doing it, and all of a sudden, it's gonna require a new position to do our budget, just seems a little, our budget's not grown that much over...
Can I get you to quote you on that? Our budget's not grown that much.
Well, I'm talking about the general aspect.
Yeah, understood, understood.
Population, the budget, the whole thing, you know, it's not good.
We think we would be more efficient with the position, and there's always efficiencies to be found in a hundred and fifty million dollar budget. So we, anyway, again, we're not proposing to fund it this year, but we were tossing around the idea, especially last year, in terms of it would be helpful to look at, you know, dive a bit deeper into, say, volunteer fire audits that we request each year, the Board of Ed, library. We have, you know, when we found out that some entities have better health insurance options than we pay our counties, we're like, okay, let's try to make it equitable. You know, if we're funding, for example, the library, and they're fully funding PPO for spouses, and they're asking for more money, we could say, well, why don't you mimic our health insurance options? That would give you more funds. And it takes time to dig into those, and if we had, I'll say, a specialist that can dig into those numbers, we think it would be more helpful. But you bring up a good point, I don't think we're at a point where we need a separate budget department. What we were proposing was an analyst position, and then that could potentially, I'm not saying it would, but that could grow as the county grows.
It usually does.
Yeah.
Okay. Quote you on that.
Yes, yes. So from salaries, we then go to benefits. From nineteen, fiscal year nineteen, to fiscal year twenty, we actually have a $27,663.43 The primary change, you can see the numbers fluctuate a bit, the two changes there, OPEB was a major decrease, as well as the benefits for the PIO position were included in that. So the numbers generally went up due to that additional position because its benefits, and then with the change to OPEB, that dropped.
What would the total be on the benefits on the PIO?
I do not have that broken down, but we're...
Was it usually about thirty percent?
I think it's closer to, yeah, in the forties, low forties. We're proposing a $40,000 salary for the PIO position, so, you know, you're looking at under $20,000 in benefits. Yeah.
What was the salary?
Forty thousand, it's on page forty-three of the budget document. You can see each of the positions, you can see, of course, the executive salary stays flat, but the other positions show a two percent COLA.
There's something I noticed throughout the budget, is that in pretty much every department, it always states that there's a reduction, and that, you know, we have savings in each department, whereas actually, in reality, costs are increasing, salaries, et cetera, are all going up, but this transfer of the OPEB and this reduction in the OPEB is giving the appearance that the departments as a whole are being reduced, the spending in the departments. So I thought that was a little bit, I mean, that was throughout the budget, you know, in all departments.
Sure, sure. Well, the change to OPEB was a significant, like in the case of just our department alone, the nineteen budget was a little over $51,000, and it's only $6,000.
Mm-hmm.
So you're talking, yeah, forty, sorry, $45,000 difference there.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that does, that does show, you know, but that's an actuarial change.
Because, well, at first, it is, I understand, but at first blush, you think, oh, look, we're saving money, all these departments are, there's reduction in all the departments, but actually, it's just the OPEB contributions.
Sure.
That made that difference.
Going to operating expenses, overall, the, when you look at the total of the executive administration, operating expenses, it is increasing from nineteen to twenty, $20,000. Some of these changes are in regards to looking at our actuals, so for example, office supplies, we've been budgeting, and we did this across the board with all departments. We looked at the last actuals, we show the last three years here, sixteen through eighteen. When we looked at their budgets, we looked at the last five years, just to see what are you actually spending, are you budgeting correctly? Is it trending up, trending down? And then asking questions based on that, you know, turn your attention to office supplies and copy equipment or lease. We've been under-budgeting what we actually spend, so those numbers went up slightly. We still have money in maintenance and repairs, because we did purchase several pool vehicles, and they won't get cycled out into the enterprise lease program until a few years out. I don't know exactly when, but we still need money for maintenance of those vehicles. Something like contractual services, it varies over time, so this is where, while we budgeted nineteen-six last year, we're proposing twenty-five, because if you look at what we've spent over three to five years, actual, it varies.
On that, Weston, what are some of the things you've spent that on?
Well, contractual services, that's when we study things, so sometimes the Singer Study, we did that recently. Yeah, I'm drawing a blank in terms of some of those things.
OPEB.
Yeah, we studied...
OPEB?
OPEB study a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Yes.
And some of the membership and things increased. I would like for the county to be involved in ICMA, that's the International City County Management Association. When I was Public Works Director, I was part of APWA, and there's a lot of benefit, just like what we get out of MAKO, meeting with our equivalents in other counties, entities elsewhere in the nation, and of course, this is an international organization. It's helpful to learn how other people are doing things, so that we're not recreating the wheel, and it may help us come up with some more innovative concepts that we can do to help improve quality of life, efficiency, and operations, and so forth. So that includes a little additional funds there.
Where was that?
That's included in the meetings, seminar conferences going up, local travel going up.
Dues and subscriptions went from five hundred to three thousand?
Yes, and that's another one, too. The ICMA membership price is up there. It's a percentage of salary, is how they calculate it. So dues and subscriptions, meetings, seminars, conferences, local travel, that's all included in.
Yeah, I always found, you know, last year, the detailed report was a lot better. I mean, I was surprised, because as Mark was asking about contractual services, that was my question, too, exactly what are they? Usually, you could get a detailed report, and you could find...
See the breakdown.
Similar to what you tried to explain right there, trying to get an explanation of what those costs were, and I mean, if somebody had to come up with a figure of $25,000, I would have thought that there would have at least been a detailed list of, or an itemized list of those expenses.
Sure, well, I mean, as you can imagine, the executive office is involved with multiple departments and multiple entities, and sometimes what we're trying to, what pops up that we need to study or fund, doesn't quite fit in recreation, parks, and tourism, or doesn't fit in corrections. So this is where our office can lead the way in that study.
Yeah, wait.
Those details do reside in Munis, so they can be found. They're in the Munis system.
Okay, any questions on operating expenses?
You had the one-time expense.
Yes, so one-time operating, going down to that. Last year, we, for fiscal nineteen, we had $89,000. This year, we're proposing $45,000. Of that $45,000, I'll say back to the eighty-nine, a large part of that was, and goes back to, you know, when the, when our office gets involved with things, the study of the tax ditches, and the money we gave to soil conservation, that then studied the various tax ditches, and making sure they were billing everybody appropriately. We funded that. What we have, both last year and this year, originally started as a Councilman John Hall request, being on the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Council. Councilman McCain sits on it now. We included $25,000 for invasive species work, and we are proposing $25,000 this year. You know, what these groups find is that there's wisteria or some other invasive plant in our park systems or elsewhere, and we're trying to start on how do we, how do we address these non-native invasive...
Wisteria, there are plants in the ponds?
Well, wisteria is, we have an area in Pemberton Park that we're looking, and we're looking, because a lot of times, we'll take this money, just like we do with whip, just like we do with forest conservation, and we will use it to match state or federal funds. So the thought is, $25,000 a year, we match it with state funds to try to hit these spots, and then also educate, hey, don't buy this ornamental plant and plant it outside. But we want to get our house in order first, and make sure our parks are treated for invasives. I know, like, down in the city park, there's English ivy that has taken over certain things. I'm not an expert in invasive plants, but what we're hearing from the Natural Resources Group is that, you know, their request was $25,000, so we included that in the forty-five. The other $20,000 is, you know, we never know quite what will pop up during the year, and in some cases, we haven't spent it, in other cases, we need more. So that's in there.
Going back to the Natural Resources, $25,000, is that, we funded that last year, right?
Correct.
Was it spent?
They're spending it now.
Yeah, it's actually, we're leveraging that with the state, they just did the project in Pemberton.
Oh, they've done it already?
Yeah.
Oh, good. I didn't know that.
They tried to do it this spring, and they also did the city park. The city park was done, I think, three weeks ago. So, you know, we get a pretty bang, pretty big bang for the buck for that, and the problem is, we're scratching the surface, but it's, we get a pretty big bang for that.
It's about a five-year, five-year plan?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's five years or not, it's kind of a year-to-year. We also get the other counties to, try to get them to participate.
I know they're reaching out to the other Lower Shore Counties to see if they'll participate, because invasives don't stick to corporate boundaries.
They don't know borders.
Yeah.
Do any of the other counties participate?
I think Somerset's participating, I think Worcester did not, Worcester might know better.
Wonder why.
I remember one did, and one didn't.
Yeah.
Some of it's just education, frankly.
Right.
Yeah, one of the issues we had heard when it first came up last year was the calorie pair and the size of the thorns that it can puncture tractor tires, and that even though we're not proposing work on private property right now, we're aiming for public property, I think a part of it will include education and outreach for, you know, if you own property and you experience this type of plant, this is the appropriate way to remove it, or these other state monies available that can, that can help.
If it can puncture a tractor tire, can you imagine what it'd do to a child?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I mean, it says the other $20,000 is community promotions, is that, that's just a catch-all term, then?
Yeah, that's a catch-all term. Things, things pop up during the year. Again, we're involved in just about everything that happens in the county, so we never quite know, and again, it doesn't always get spent, but it's, it's good to have.
So that's been in the budget for a few years?
Yes.
Can we get a printout of what that money was spent on for the last two or three years?
Yeah, we can, we can do that.
I mean, because we have a community promotions section, section six is community promotions, so...
Yeah, and that all may be allocated, and if you look at budget to actuals, you'll see that it's, they tend to go over, so it could be something that we move the $20,000 of one-time expenses to number six, community promotion. But, yeah, we can, Michelle, if you could print that.
Maybe you can provide both of those, number six and the $20,000 that's in the county for the past two years.
Sure, sure, we can provide that.
But send the executives' office, I mean, the past two years.
But again, we're involved, the Soil Conservation Tax Map Study was a good example of, that came up. They are a state entity that has, does significant work in the county. They needed additional funds to study the tax ditches, to make sure they had the right properties, and all properties that should be built are being built.
But we, we put money in for that.
Yes, no, but what I'm saying is, that's what this one-time expense has been used for, is when things like that pop up.
Yeah.
That soil conservation isn't something we typically fund.
But didn't we fund an employee to do it?
Yes, it was, and it's done.
That was another line item, right?
That was within that $89,000 that we had in last year's budget.
And the employee?
Yes, that was, that was a temporary employee. They ended the jobs over.
Okay.
They mapped what they needed to map, and, yeah, maybe in ten years or so, they'll need to update their maps again, but, so that, I mean, that's just one example of, it's not something we normally fund. Soil conservation, which does work, you know, in the county, and we were able to provide them funding through this account.
I'm pretty certain community promotions consist of a lot of the MAKO fees.
Yeah, MAKO.
MAKO and so forth. That's where they're, and at one time, they were covering both branches.
But that's the number six.
Yes, that's number six.
Yes.
Yeah, which is not here.
But we'll pull those.
They're a little different, yeah. They're a bit different.
Yes.
Yeah, but, I mean, just to go on that, so we also pay dues to the Chamber of Commerce and the Greater Salisbury Committee?
I believe so. Okay, yes, we do.
Any other questions?
Yeah, we'll pull the, and the last line item, nothing's being proposed this year or last year, was capital, there's no capital expenses for our department.
I think we'll have to reschedule another time for some more discussions, especially, I think, because this was sort of categorized as administrative slash executive, which I think most people interpret as just executive.
Sure.
But as, I think probably as a wrap-up, it'd be really good to talk about some other things administratively.
Things as a whole, yes.
Yeah, the budget as a whole, you know, debt service, stipends.
Yes, we'll be glad.
Things like that. I have one more.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Joe. I'm getting questions, there were some rumors going around about retirees' health insurance. What's, what's the skinny on that one?
Okay, there's no change to retirees' health insurance at all. It's an actuarial calculation. We have been very aggressive in funding OPEB over the last several years in order to get it fully funded. The big change in OPEB is, has nothing to do with the coverage or the retirees, it's how we're funding it. Instead of looking, we're looking at it on an annual basis, saying, okay, a stipend means we're giving you $15,000 a year, we're still gonna administer it, but we're gonna pay it. The big actuarial hang-up on that, and what makes a difference, is right now, the health insurance market is out of control. It's at five percent, five, six percent increase, where if you look at a stipend approach, and even though they're getting the same coverage, you're linking it to the actual, you know, the actual Consumer Price Index, which is around a two percent, which, if you look at how we're negotiating our health insurance and how it's coming in on the pools, that's what we're looking at as an increase this year. So, you know, just look, taking a look at how actuaries are doing it with mortality tables changing, because people are living longer, looking at the market for health insurance, you're seeing this switch, and City of Salisbury did it a couple of years ago, of how are we paying it as an employer versus a change in coverage.
So you're saying there's no change in coverage?
No.
Is there gonna be a change in the cost to the retiree?
No.
None whatsoever?
Absolutely not. We got them, when we were planning this out in the strategy, we got retirees to be at least six percent ahead of market, and considering it's only going up two percent this year, in the end, it's actually, no, absolutely not.
Right.
It's actually a financial smoothing process.
Yes.
So as opposed to the county's contribution spiking, dropping, spiking, dropping, it's an actuarial calculation under assumptions that the actuary makes, where you smooth out the contribution, for lack of any better word. So it, it's an attempt to manage the volatility, if you will, in those costs for the county. Has nothing to do with changing the coverage or the contributions the employee makes, it's more how the county pays for it, if that makes sense.
And if there's any change in coverage, it would be on behalf of Care First, nothing that, you know, what they've changed in prescriptions, what the boards have changed, just as we educated last year, but absolutely not, no change in coverage. And eventually, you will see the market come into more of a control when it comes to health insurance.
Just to clarify, the cost to the retirees is not changing either?
Well...
Not this year, or you wouldn't expect that to change within, say, the next three years?
The cost associated with retirees, the contract, actually, the plan they're in, is a lot lower than what Care First is offering for equivalent coverage. They, there's certain factors that they have not finalized, so if the increase comes in, it will be on the insurance end, but we still will be covering the same. So, yeah, even employees' health insurance went up this year.
Okay, but back to the retirees.
But the retirees' health insurance, yes, it may go up in the total contract, but there will be no change as far as administering it and what we pay.
Or what the retiree pays.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, and Laura, thank you, because Laura sent us an email, kind of explaining this, you know, because I think, I think with some of the retirees first saw this, and they saw stipend, they thought they were gonna get...
No.
You know, those stipends, as opposed to, it's just on the county's end.
It's the proper actuarial language for funding. It's the proper actuarial language for funding it, and it's extremely important that we get this plan a hundred percent funded. We've been, we're actually paying not only towards OPEB, but we're doing PEGO for the total cost and around one point two million dollars above OPEB for health insurance for retirees. So getting it fully funded minimizes the cost of what we're having to throw to the side, to this trust. And eventually, just like your pension, you don't receive a check from Wycomico County, you receive a check from Atona for your pension check. So eventually, the idea of OPEB is that the actual payment of health insurance will be administered out of this trust, once it gets to a funding level to handle that.
Right. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you.
I think they're out in the hall. What else did you get out of the pictures? I just sent you a picture. Did you get some texts or something?
No, it was ringing too.
Oh, oh.
The phone calls.
I don't know why that happened. You've got to be careful when you send some of those texts, you might send texts from everybody.
Oh, I know.
I tell you, I don't.
All right, what numbers?
What I put on my phone.
What number's boarded at?
It's usually the last one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I might be wrong.
Someone has to tell us.
I also come from the forces. What number's aboard at?
Page one thirty-seven.
Oh, um.
Is this number, Joe?
It's this number.
Thirty, thirty.
Yeah, they're all looking at different stuff, yeah.
For you, Joe, it's thirty.
What tab is it?
Section thirty.
Section thirty.
It's tab thirty.
I had that written down to that.
Somebody said something about eight hundred thousand dollars. Did y'all hear them? Oh, hey, just didn't know y'all were, why don't y'all come up? We're good here, thanks. Morning.
Morning.
Good morning. How's everyone?
Good.
Good. Great, thanks. I think maybe, you know, if you'd want to start, as we always kind of do with an overview, so that you.
Yep, happy to. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come in and discuss the FY twenty budget request from Wycomico County Board of Ed and to have an opportunity to respond to any questions that you have. I also want to thank you for taking the huge step that you did a year ago in funding us five hundred thousand dollars above maintenance of effort. I think that was a big step for our community and was greatly appreciated, the support that you provided, so.
Before you get started, I need to interrupt you. If you could pass all the mics down and just let the public know who we have in front of us, thanks. That's okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I'm Donna Handlin, Superintendent of Schools.
Mike Stoffler, Director of Secondary Education and incoming Chief Finance and Operations Officer.
And Don Fitzgerald, Chairman of Wycomico County School Board.
Great, okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, John.
Thank you.
So in January, at the State of the Schools, I spent some time talking about where we are, the progress that we've made at, as a school system. And I spent some time explaining to those who were there about the importance of continuing our momentum. I talked about Jim Collins' work, Going from Good to Great, and his flywheel strategy, which is the importance of in going from, in going through a good-to-great transformation, that you continue the momentum. It's like pushing this giant, heavy flywheel, and you stay the course. You continue with the strategies, and that's exactly what we're doing. So as you hopefully have had an opportunity at some point to review Imagine 2022, you have seen that we are staying the course with the three strategic priorities. The strategies are a little bit different, things that we believe that we need to be doing in order to continue to make progress. So in the, in the budget book that you received, the Proposed Consolidated Current Expense Budget, you see those itemized requests on pages sixty-five, sixty-six, and sixty-seven that again are specifically assigned or aligned, excuse me, to the strategies in Imagine 2022. And I will just tell you briefly, I'm not going to go through each one, but again, our first priority is increasing the number of students who enter our schools ready to learn. You will notice that that funding amount is greatly decreased from last year because we were very hopeful and have since received word that we did receive the pre-K expansion grant money from the state. So we know that we're getting an additional two million dollars from the state to support pre-kindergarten. In the second strategy, and let me also make note in, under strat, priority one, sorry, there is item three, the social worker, and you're going to notice a recurring theme where we have really placed a lot of emphasis in this year's requests that supports all three priorities for supporting the behavioral and social and emotional needs of our students. So you'll see social worker there, you see social workers under strategy two also, which is the actual priority is to increase graduation rate. So you'll see a number of requests under that, including social workers, but also psychologists, guidance counselor. There's also a, where is that? Can't find it. Oh, a campus patrol, item nine, campus patrol assistant at Hart Side and Bennett Middle. This is a position that we have in place in our other secondary schools, and it works quite well with assisting with what's happening between classes and ensuring that students are where they need to be. We also have line item in here to support English language learners. We've talked before about our increased enrollment in that area, and we need to support those students in reaching the milestone of graduation. And then, strategy three is to recruit and retain a high-performing workforce, and that total amount there includes salary increases for all three bargaining units as well as healthcare. And then, priority four are the other mandatory costs of doing business items. So we will entertain any questions that you have and appreciate any consideration that you give to funding our request.
Where are you at on the Mardella funding that we discussed a week before ago?
The capital funding?
Yeah, any change in that?
Yes, yes. Staff this morning met with the staff of the county executive and came to an agreement that, that, as we shared, I believe, at the hearing, that the funding is available because the state did not fund the West Side Roof. So the county executive, I believe, has agreed to moving that funding to the Mardella project, which is what we would need in order to submit for planning approval. It's not the full amount, but it does meet the minimum to be able to complete an ed spec to submit for planning approval for Mardella. Two hundred and ninety-one thousand, I believe.
And the original request was seven hundred?
Yes, it was, which also included design development, which is the next step of the project.
Well, we'll have to talk about that later. Yeah, I understand. I'd like to get into it now, but we really want to just, I guess, work on this operating budget first. Do you have a question mark?
No.
Write me down, so.
I'm fine.
I guess we go back to that. Yeah, I, it's so funny, because you see all the, you know, the support costs that are going into all this, well, with counselors, et cetera. But I think it's, but it's very surprising, and I think we're finally beginning to learn that. I think it's old school versus new school. You know, I think some people say, oh, here you are, you're pampering these kids again. But I believe there is definitely a need to try to put control measures on that, and I think that it's good to see that the Board of Education is recognizing that. And I had a gentleman ask me the other day, well, I hear, you know, that there's, there are a lot of, a lot of, you know, I would, migrants who are coming to the area, and I understand that the Board of Education, they're spending a whole lot of money on this, you know, we're going to have to pay that. It was a rather simple response from me. I said, well, they are here, you know? It's not a temporary transition, they're here. And they're going to be here in the next five years, the next ten years. Somehow or other, it has to be addressed. It's not like it's an anomaly that's going to go away at any point in time. So, you know, have to recognize those costs and that need to address it. So I'm glad to see, I'm glad to see the progression here. And then we, we never have discussed the eight hundred thousand.
It's part of the.
That is what the, that is what the total request is to fund Imagine 2022.
Yeah, so could you break down, you know, like you did in, you know, the state, you know, savings from your end and what the eight hundred will fund, you know, how that works?
Okay. So, Jesse?
Yeah?
If you want to join us up here, just in case I misspeak, but I'm going to, and Micah, of course, jump in, please, too. We are receiving roughly about six, six million dollars additional funding from the state in order to, to fund our plan. There's a total of, now let me back up. So six million dollars from the state, the county aid is about one point, would have been one point two million dollars if you just funded it, maintenance of effort, meaning that the total increase with just maintenance of effort is a little over seven million dollars. So the plan requires about seven point, almost eight million dollars. So the difference, once we, and we also made some budget reductions in there, about almost two million dollars in budget reductions. So the difference is how we got to that eight hundred thousand dollars. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I was really just joking about that. I mean, I think, I think we're always very comfortable with it. So, anyone else?
I know, actually, a little bit of a comment while we go, like, Wayne Weston here, but, you know, we did our strategic plan earlier in the year, but, you know, this is a good example, this is why you have a strategic plan.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and, you know, you're able to show from a budget, budgetary process, that you're following your plan and accomplishing your goals. You know, I mean, I like to see, actually, as a county, you know, it's like next year, for example, maybe if you have that budget person to help. But to mirror, you know, to some degree, you know, I mean, we have our goals and objectives, you know, and in our budget, you know, how much money are we putting toward those priorities? And are we accomplishing those priorities? You know, I mean, we can learn a little bit from, you know, we're here to learn, too. And we can, you know, but I mean, I commend you for your, you know, you had your strategic plan, you've laid out your strategies, and you're showing how you're accomplishing those goals and objectives.
Thank you.
And you're right, Bill, because, you know, I think ninety percent of the criticism of the Board of Education just comes down to these generalities. Oh, you're spending more money with the Board of Education. And the one thing I've said over and over again is that in the additional funds that are being, for what degree they are, it could always be more. But in making those contributions, it helps when we do recognize specific goals, and you can point that out to anybody that asks you and say, well, it's very specific. You know, not only do we have specific, you know, itemization of expenses, but we have real solid, specific goals, rather than just saying, we need more money. And I believe a lot of the current report came down to that as well. They said, don't just throw money at it. They said, you know, demand accountability. And I think this helps present that, like Councilman McCain says, that's what you have here is accountability. Anyone, yes?
Maybe one of the things here talks about replacing, so you're going to replace nurses with outside contractors or hire in-house, replace outside contractors for the priority number two line item nineteen?
We want to replace the contracted nurses, which are about eighty thousand dollars a year, with in-house nurses, which would be essentially half.
All right.
You can hire nurses for forty thousand dollars a year.
We can.
Well?
Yep.
Are they RNs or LPNs?
I'm sorry?
RNs or LPNs?
I believe either. I'd have to check with.
There's not many, there's not many, there's not many LPNs.
Of course, they don't work twelve months a year either.
Yeah, it's only ten months, that's why we can afford to start them at forty thousand
Josh?
I know, of course, it's a continued issue with a lot of folks who, a lot of the, a lot of kids who don't have any, don't have much food. And I know some of the, look at the food services, the drop, and is there anything you want to say as far as, I don't know if there's any, I don't quite fully understand how all of the state money comes to take care of a lot of the children, you don't have a lot of funds. I know more and more counties are becoming areas that are fully with free and reduced lunch. I don't know if there's anything you want to say as far as that. I was curious, I didn't really know enough as far as how that's working out with funds coming in, but are we continuing to, are we taking care of more of the brunt of, when it comes to, you know, feeding a lot of the kids that are coming through, or anything you want to say about that?
I don't know if you're looking at a specific item or just generally speaking.
Generally speaking, but also glanced in, there actually is in the general funding. This is part of the maintenance of effort, flipping over page one forty-one on the, in the county operating budget. And I'm not sure how that creases inside the yellow booklet, but.
The county, the county budget, or you're talking about the county budget?
Yeah.
Not our budget, okay.
Right, so is that, I don't know how all of this, I'm still learning, so I'm not quite sure how all this money goes from one to the other, and if there are state monies coming in with this. And I know there's going to be a lot of turnover or a lot of changes as far as state money coming in, but I guess my bottom-line concern would be that I want to make sure that we're continuing to take care of the total children.
And we do. We obviously are paying very much attention to students who qualify for free and reduced meals to make sure that those students are being provided with those meals and to make sure that we've reached out and tried to find all of those students who would qualify, who may not necessarily have applied. We've recently gone to an online application, which will make it easier for families. We do, so for the, for our total food service program, we try to make that program as self-sufficient as possible. And each year, we've actually reduced the amount of money from our general fund that goes to support food services, because again, it should be as self-sufficient as possible. That's a goal that we have, and it has been reduced each year. But that is not at the expense of feeding children who need to be fed.
Is there a trend we're seeing over the next, over the last couple of years or going forward, any forecasting, is there?
With the number of students who qualify for free and reduced meals, it's stayed, it's slightly risen, but it's stayed around in the low sixties percent.
You know, we, we fund, I don't like to try to micromanage or anything like that, but I only get so many opportunities to discuss what I hear sometimes. And this is something really for the board, Don, is that what I've heard on numerous occasions, and that they say that, oh, yeah, you know, they're talking about free and reduced meals, and giving the students, but all that, so much of that food gets thrown away. I don't know if it's true or not, doesn't matter, it's, but I think maybe it may be something the Board of Education may want to look at as to whether or not there's any type of tracking, as to whether it's a process where you're putting it out there and it's not really needed as much as people think, or there's such a large waste factor that maybe there would be a way to control that. I don't even know if it's a reality, I just know that's what I've been told over the.
Well, people have brought that up to us before.
As you've heard it, yeah.
And I know we've looked into it, so it's nothing new to us, but I agree with you, we should not be throwing a lot away.
Yeah.
And we agree as well, and I think that you can see that the reduced amount of funding that we have in next year's budget is a result of getting better.
Oh, really?
And being able to, you know, make sure that we're offering the things that the students like, and also that we're offering the right amount so that we're not throwing away, and that we're being as cost-effective as possible. We're hopeful, we're moving towards a self-sustaining, really, department with food services, that's our goal.
Sweet. Excellent. Thanks. Any other questions?
All right, this is in the budget question. What happens to the food you throw in the trash? It just goes to the landfill? Or is there a recycling effort done on it?
I'm not sure I know the answer to that question. That's a great question, as far as recycling.
Years ago, farmers used to pick it up, you know, feed it to hogs. I don't know.
Hog farmers used to.
Yeah, I don't know whether.
Okay.
Every day.
I'll certainly can look into that and get an answer back to you.
Do you have a hog farm, Joe?
Did? Say, I bought my first car.
By the way, there was a state bill that passed this past year that looks more institutional purchasing from local farmers. It was a cute bill, I can't say that it was as effective, but nonetheless, there was still more attention put towards sourcing locally, which is always a challenge, but, and then, of course, we don't, we still don't have a regional compost facility on the eastern shore, so that's another. facility on the eastern shore. So, that's another getting at what Joe's pointing out. Or we can feed more hog farms either way.
And I will say, we are increasing every year the amount of local foods that we're bringing into the schools with the produce, the fruits and vegetables coming from our local farmers.
Interesting.
Local chicken, stuff like that.
Lots of chicken.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much. Appreciate you taking the time.
Absolutely. For your consideration and your support.
And thank you to the other board members out there and staff. Good to see everybody. Take care. Oh, thank you.
You don't have a leader anymore?
Oh, Dawn. Oh, great. Thanks. Yeah, that's good.
You got to spend time with me.
All right, Dawn.
I can see all those nice things on your way up.
Oh, my God. This, that was an hour, man. I missed that. Who's in charge? Because I looked at this last night, I thought, half hour for each one? Can't believe it. And I realized, I didn't realize it was an hour, man.
She changed it actually.
You know, I would have continued the discussion. I wouldn't have wrapped it up. I would have gone to CIP.
That makes it pretty easy.
Wow.
Yeah.
All right, that's okay. No, I don't understand that they, putting the two hundred and some thousand into it. I mean...
It just puts it back on the schedule?
Well, it only puts it off for one year. I'm hoping they're saying that they put the whole process back in for the five years. Because if you spend two hundred on a plan, that's not, plan's not going to be any good two years from now.
Right.
That's what I was wanting.
Can we try to call Dawn to see if she's available and come earlier?
Um, who is this?
That's good. Yeah, we could.
I didn't realize it was, I would have...
We have a half hour, yeah.
Fifty-two.
You can't have nine.
Laura or Lynn, we might want to reach out to Ruth as well, because obviously we're going to be, we could be as much as an hour ahead of schedule by the time they come around.
Fire department's going to be the ones that's not going to be here real early.
And my apologies before we're on the record for being work casual. I'm planning the airport for Wings and Wheels, so...
Hey, it says Salisbury Airport. That's all we know. That's all we care about.
Unless you, do you have a pantsuit that says Salisbury Airport?
No, no.
Okay. If you could, just state your name, position, just for the public. We are on PAC fourteen today. It's being recorded.
Matt Morris, CPA, airport accountant.
Dawn Veitch, airport manager, Salisbury Regional Airport.
Dawn, we'll let you get started. If you'd like to just give us an overview.
Okay. Well, you've got this book, and we've got a printout. So, hopefully they parallel. We looked at it just briefly, and it looks like it runs in line. So, advertising, we have twenty-four thousand. So, the advertising, we have twenty-four thousand. Last year, we had thirty thousand dollars. We reduced it. Professional fees, we have three thousand dollars. It increased two thousand.
Everybody, I think I'll say it.
Fifty-two in the big book.
It's page two oh one, that's appearing.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Dawn.
Professional fees, it was three thousand. It was a thousand more this year. Training external was a reduction. It's ten thousand this year. ARF services, and I didn't have a chance to ask what happened here, because our budget was adjusted. This is a contractual agreement, so this is not going to cover our contract. It should have been a, yes, sir, it should have been a twenty percent, a two percent increase from the previous year, which was two eighty-three, nine sixteen. And somebody, somehow it got reduced point forty-five percent instead of increase two. So, it's not going to cover it. Just, I tried to meet, that's what we were meeting when y'all said come early. So, I didn't get a clarification on that one.
Change in the total this year?
It would, yes, sir, because that's a contractual obligation that we have every year for our crash fire rescue.
Is it a year-to-year contract?
Yes, sir.
How old do you negotiate? I know a year, a year, but one?
Five years. It's one year renewable with the escalation of two percent per year for CPI.
So, you're up two percent?
Yeah, each year. And then at five years, we renegotiate. Or we can at any time if we're not happy with the services. But, they're doing a great job.
So, is that a change made in the executive's office then? I guess that would be a Weston question?
That's why we were meeting before the meeting.
What kind of change are we going to look at?
Come on up, Wayne, first. Do you want to?
He just said they'll address it.
Yeah. The office supplies is an increase to eight thousand. We have additional people. We've got additional services that, and prices have gone up. And the office copy and lease, we've got a new printer coming. Our printer is not only old, but it's not repairable. So, we've put in the budget for a new lease. The aero maintenance and repairs, last year was, is an increase this year to one twenty. And those costs are broken out here for airfield facilities, taxiway. It's also includes the FAA mandate for our aircraft, airport marking, lighting, and paving. If you recall, we had to get a MAA grant to bring the airport into compliance. We'd been out of compliance since before I arrived here, and we never had the money. So, we have now taken upon into our budget, which should have always been there, a percentage of the airport needs to have every year rubber removal, and a percent needs to have paint touch-up so that it never gets in a state of non-compliance again. So, that's part of that, most of that increase is that. It should have been seventy thousand a year, but since we did the entire airfield this year, we reduced it a little bit because some of it won't need to be done with taxiway alpha in our CIP that is being done next year. So, we removed her. She's a heavy-used taxiway. That's the main taxiway that parallels the primary runway. So, she would always need touch-up. Those glass beads don't stay on forever. So, that's the reason for the increase there. Maintenance supply is reduced a little bit. We tried our best to actually go through our inventory. That includes all of our runway field lights and things like that. Rent for mod space, that's the office and rest area for the crash fire rescue folks that is inside the hangar. That's a fixed lease, and that is the increase on the lease that is in the contract from the previous year to this year. Phones, they just are what they are. The phone lines, the cell phones, utility and electric, utility electric, the ESG lease, that is going to continue to run until 2025. And so, it's just an expense we have every year for putting in the LED lights, as I recall, many years ago. Vehicle expense, fuel, we stayed the same. We don't anticipate any increase because we don't have any new vehicles. The only time we typically have a big increase in fuel is if we have a heavy snow season. We had a light one this year, so we kind of stuck with the previous year. Even though we didn't spend, I don't think we spent our fuel this year at fourteen thousand. We left it the same. Let's see, where are we? Vehicle expenses, we put in five thousand for tires, and that's for our heavy vehicles. We've got new pickups, three new pickups and three new SUV, two new SUVs coming in that have a maintenance plan, so we don't need anything. But, our dump trucks and our vehicles like that, if they lose a tire, it's five thousand. So, if we can't patch it, that's why that's in there.
Dump truck tires, five thousand dollars?
It's, we've got several of them. So, if we damage a couple of tires, that's what we've put in there for contingency.
Oh, okay. I thought you said a dump tank tire was...
Well, I just put my heavy vehicles, because they're for the, like, the dump trucks and tractors and so forth. The vehicle expenses, maintenance, this is on our ARF truck. That's thirty-one thousand a year. That is, let me double check that one. That one is...
That went up quite a bit.
Well, I want to be sure before I start out. I'm pretty sure this is the E.
It's part of the new ARF, right?
Well, that's what I'm double checking. So, part of it is. So, that's why I wanted to break it out, because it wasn't in the detail. The Stryker, which is our 1993 vehicle that we've had, a regular maintenance plan, which it's never had with a contract, a contract is fifty-five hundred. Six thousand was what the inspection cost us this year because of what they find on inspection, things that have to be replaced before inspections and things that were never being done prior. The twelve thousand is for the new truck that was donated by BWI. It was being, what's the word? It was being accessed through the airport, and they were able to access it to us. But, it had also had some of the essential equipment taken off that they were going to use on other equipment. So, now we have to replace that to make her completely...
That's all the maintenance?
Yes, sir. It would be replacing parts and things that are not on there. It's not enough, twelve thousand dollars, to be considered large capital.
Yeah, that gift is worth to the county about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, the investment you're putting into that new ARF truck, that's your return on your investment?
Are you getting DOT inspections done on these annually?
No, we got a fire company that does it, right? Yeah, it's, it's not DOT. These never go on the street. So, if it was on the street, it would require those inspections. What we have is FAA, and Atlantic Tractor has the contract for the Stryker, and they're accustomed to the E1.
So, if there was a crash, plane crash, couple farms over, they would not respond?
No.
Really?
Parsons Park would. Unless it's on airport property. Once it leaves airport property, normally it's far enough that the other fire departments are close.
They responded in the past.
Okay. Well, there's a lot of things that happen in the past that are not necessarily correct, such as four hundred and fifty-pound chemical, dry chemical tanks in back of a pickup is being the ARF backup. And I stopped that when I got here. So, I don't try to look too far back. Really don't know, no. Yes, sir. Some of those things are way out of bounds of being even reasonably legal. The vehicle expenses and maintenance on the ARF truck, I think I covered that enough. Any other questions on that? Okay. Vehicle expenses and repairs, this was forty thousand dollars. It includes the cost for our trucks and tractors, our snow removal equipment, and the ARF vehicle that needs to be repaired in addition to other expenses that aren't specific on those inspections and the contract. Those went up mainly because our vehicles are getting very old. And my first two budgets, well, I only really did last year's budget. I wasn't here long enough to really realize how broken they are and what they really cost, so that really the estimates were not correct, which is why we were so broke this year trying to fix things. Vehicle, let's see, meetings and seminars, we reduced that from what our original request was. It's thirteen thousand this year. That includes two meetings to two drones. It was setting up our display and making those connections that we need to do, and going to two speed dating with the airlines conferences. I just got back from one, and they definitely are worth the money to go and make those presentations and contacts. Web maintenance is twelve thousand increase because we're switching vendors. I have a vendor right now that has told me in the middle of Wings and Wheels, we have to take our pay system off because their system can't support it. So, we were paying for all our vendors. We can't add anything new to our website, and it's been crippling us for the two years I've been here. So, I worked last year with the vendor that supplies web services to the Civic Center, and we've talked to them, and they've given me a quote of what it will take to take a blogger's platform and put it on a proper web platform. It's in WordPress, and I don't know if y'all know the difference, but WordPress is basically a blogger's website. I used it when I went cruising. It's, you know, it's great for little things, but it's not a website, and it's really crippling us in our ability. I need to do marketing. I need to sell advertising on the website. I can do zero of that. So, it'll be a revenue generator once we get this new platform up. And then their maintenance fee, instead of ninety-nine dollars a month, is forty-five a month. So, my maintenance fee goes down, this one-time cost. And then they have a menu of things, as I need to add things that we pay for as we go forward. It's a good product.
Yeah, you can't, you can't really hedge on web services anymore.
No, no.
It is your, it's your face, especially in your business.
Yes.
Most people are going to see. It's not like your retail business.
Exactly. And we really want that, generate the real cost of your ticket program on there. So, most of the smaller airports like us with regionals have that, where you put in what you paid for your Southwest ticket at BWI, and what did it really cost you by the time you pay the tolls, you drive all the way up there, you spend the night in a hotel so that you get free parking or whatever, the combinations of the way people structure that. But, you can get your real time and loss of what it really cost you to buy that cheap ticket. So, we really want that to be able to help promote the airport. The next thing is, let's see, contractual services.
Your professional services were cut in half, I noticed. Couple lines down.
Yeah, I haven't, I was just getting to those. So, professional services were cut in half. Last year, we had the, these are for Delta Engineering Services. So, they did Alpha and the air carrier ramp. They did the rest of the master plan, and that's done. It was turned in a week ago Friday with the airport master plan update. That's been a two-year project getting done that we were funding professional services to them. I had to cut somewhere, and so the other things, the only thing I didn't cut was Delta Engineering, because that's where our FAA grants require. We have a professional company prepare those grant packages and to do the engineering and design work and everything. That's the only thing I didn't cut. And the rest of those services are things like professional services that I use for core drilling samples that we did this year for the ARF to make sure where they, not ARF, but for, we forward-funded it out of something where we were sampling for different things. Professional services, I don't know what all comes out of there a lot.
The wall murals, too?
Yeah, we did. And that was leftover money from the previous year. So, some of that is why it's cut this year. But, it was just an area that I felt I could cut this year and not do things. My graphic design, for example, in the year that we did, the logos and some things like that, and the marketing materials that we did, that came out of professional services. We just updated our marketing materials, so I won't be doing that next year. So, those are the other things that came out. Plus, Delta had three, three fifty thousand dollar, I guess they only had two fifty thousand and some change contracts last year. So, employment and processing is three thousand. Went up because last year it didn't cover it. Uniforms, we left that the same. That is our safety equipment on the airfield. When it says uniforms, it's not clothing. It's the safety things like vests, that reflective vests, the snow, big heavy snow coats that they bought last year. If I have somebody new this year, it might, you know, somebody else's might not fit, things like that. Insurance liability is set. Bonds and principles are set. Interest is set. Computer and equipment, IT gave me a list of what I needed to buy. I have a... I have an infected computer that really gives me problems, so they wanted to replace my laptop. We need a new desktop and a few other items. And then software, it's to continue with two licenses and we dropped one, one product. So that's why there's a reduction. Building improvements, and this is the, let's see. So these are several buildings. If you take the HVAC system and the maintenance, that's a window unit because they're in that nineteen forty-two hangar and that thing finally died this year. So, that was their heater and air conditioner. So now we're hoping in July one, we can put a new window AC in there. That one was a thousand. The tester for the transformers is, the transformers are what we put in our, in our hangars for people to be able to have electricity. And it steps things up or down whichever way it needs to go. The AED is mandatory. We have to replace them every so many years. The HVAC, I did that one, the enterprise portion of air traffic control for their rehab. We've got a couple items in there that we need to do, like seal the outside of the building. That concrete block is leaking. Every time we get a hard wind and rain, it comes right through the walls and drips inside. And then they need some electronical rehab. And then the equipment room addition was pulled because of FAA. We pulled it out of the CIP last year and this year both for that additional piece. Let's see, what's next? Got a lot of zeros there. Capital building improvement, one hundred and seventy, one thousand nine hundred. It's an increase from twenty-two thousand last year. So the things that are in here are the perimeter gates. These are for, okay, is that repair? Those are, those are repairs. That's not the replacement because that's in the CIP. The perimeter gates, that's repairs, right? Yeah, so that is to repair. We've got in our CIP a new gate electronic system that's required under the FAA and TSA. We had it in for CIP twenty. We've moved it because of the CIP twenty was, was way over. So we put the maintenance to repair it another year in this year. And we kicked the replacement down the road another year. So that's, yes, sir.
Sorry, can I interrupt you?
Mm-hmm.
Before we get too far.
Yeah.
Going back to the beginning of the capital building improvement.
Mm-hmm.
It's got paving, hangar, tang, delete, county will do, and also hangar two and four county will do. Does that mean that county's going to be doing that paving under the paving contract or?
It means the, the site work will get done.
County will do the site work?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there any money transferred from the airport to say whichever department in the county is doing that?
No, sir.
So that's basically being done at no charge to the airport?
That's a Western question. I don't know how we're doing that.
Do you want to answer that question? Huh? That has to be billed, you know. If we do it in the house, we've got to bill it. Yeah, well, I've seen, you know, I've seen county roads trucks on the airport in the past and I was always often wondered if that money's being transferred back in some, some form.
We have zero there, so I don't know. I don't know what happened there.
Okay.
The painting of the rails, I'm sorry.
Yeah, in terms of a capital project, if, 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 if we're going to do internally the site work to, to, to build a new building, to build a hangar, that, that would necessarily have to be billed from the department doing the work to that airport project.
But has, has it been done?
No, sir. This is next year's budget.
No, we haven't done it yet.
But I mean, has it been done in the past?
No, sir.
It's not been done in the past either, so.
Well, we haven't built anything yet, so I'm not...
Well, I'm talking about, I'm not just talking about building things. I'm talking about work being done at the airport, say by county roads or whatever entity does work at the county roads.
Snow removal?
Any kind of work, any kind of work.
I, I'd have to look at the details, Joe. I know that when we did, I know we did some paving work over there.
The painting and we were charged.
You know, the loop and they were, and the airport did pay for that work. In terms of ordinary, you know, just occasional operational work, I can't answer that off the top of my head, but I could look at it for you.
Well, the Loop Road is county. That's not airport. The Loop Road is county. That's, so if you've ever seen them there, even the snow removal is their responsibility because it's county road. Okay.
Sorry for the interruption.
That's right, and I'm glad you asked because I saw it was zero and I'm, I just know it got changed, so. The perimeter gates we covered, painting the rails, these are on the air traffic. Their walking area up there, those rails are rusting. They need attention. Seal and waterproof the towers, I said before, the rail lights, those are ten thousand dollars. Those are the runway end identifier lights. They're very specific focused lights and they're very expensive when those bulbs go out. And there's about, I think, twelve on each end. When you take the end and then the ones in between. The airline doors, we've got them Band-Aid fixed right now, but they need to be replaced. Those are the baggage doors for outgoing from TSA after it leaves TSA to go out to the aircraft to be loaded onboard. Those are being held together, held up manually because the, the worm gears have been stripped and they're not replaceable because the equipment is so old. The T hangar repairs, this is what we are figuring on routine maintenance. We've never put that in before, so we've kind of got a feel now for what the hangars are taking for maintenance and repairs. So the site prep for two relocations, that was put in the CIP is why that is zero. GEO study for the removal of the two hangars, that was put in and moved down the road to twenty twenty in the CIP. We just put it in with the whole package instead of trying to piecemeal a little bit here. We were trying to get ahead of the game with the ARF building to get, because our ARF building is in what, right now, in one of these hangars that will be moved. And we were trying to get it pre-located so that, the first one, so we could put them in there, well, until they moved into the new ARF building. The ARF building's been delayed due to finances, so we've just kicked everything down the road a little further. The next one is the gate for taxiway golf. We've kicked that down the road another year to twenty twenty-one. Replace the strip, seal and stripping of the parking lot, that is the parking lot adjacent, directly adjacent to the building. And that's our employee plot. You can't see the lines anymore and it's becoming, it's just not as, as functional and the pavement's all tearing up. So we've had it patched a couple of times, but it needs to have a melon replace. I'm sorry, I don't remember what year the last time they did that. I, I believe it's been done since nineteen ninety-three, but I wouldn't bet on it looking at it. Replace the existing snow guards. We kicked that down the road another year because they're, they've fallen off the roof. They're not there. But most of them are not, well, none of them are in front of a doorway. So, if somebody's coming out of a door, they're not likely to get hit. But, but anybody in an area that's not at a doorway is, we'll probably have to post signs or something for a safety issue next winter. Because, yeah, because I, I can't do it this year. Maintenance terminal, that was for the soffits. We kicked that down the road. We kicked, the ARF building budget is over, so we kicked all those things down and put it in the CIP. And the road to the relocated UAS and everything we put in the discussion that we will have a public hearing on. The sewer connection is part of that as well. The weather stripping for the remaining hangars. So, we just finished painting hangars. Last fall, we painted one set of T hangars. So we've put the weather stripping in out of this year's budget that we budgeted. We can't put them in in this fiscal year because they have to cure. So, as soon as they cure, we'll put them in and that'll be next year. And that includes the T hangars and the two corporate hangars that didn't have them replaced last year. Because we went ahead and replaced them because they were so bad with the birds getting in it. We just went ahead and replaced the seals last year. Snow removal equipment building, that's been pushed into the CIP. Same thing with the FEMA and then the rehab. And we're down to capital leases on vehicles. That is our new, three pickup trucks that are utility and then the two SUVs that are four-wheel drive for the airport.
It says quantity one?
It's four, five vehicles.
Five vehicles.
It's five vehicles.
Two SUVs and three pickups?
Yes, sir.
So it's forty-eight thousand a year for how many years?
They're five-year leases.
I think they're five-year leases.
Yeah, and that includes a maintenance plan with them, service and maintenance plan. Terminal utilities, sixty-five thousand. That's the electric sewer and cable. This is, Sharp Water is the next one, sixteen thousand. That's what we spend because we don't have potable water. So when we get that back, that'll help. And pest control and a few things there. The cleaning contract is a contractual agreement. The terminal main and repairs, those are for routine maintenance in the terminal building itself, including the HVAC system. And the roof contract.
Water line is put in, you won't be needing that potable water now?
No, no, sir. We'll actually be able to drink our water. Right now, we don't drink it and we still have to test it. So, because I don't, I don't understand that, since we don't drink it and we've disabled all our drinking fountains and we provide water, we still pay Sharp money to come out and test our water. So, seems, I don't understand that one. Aero environmental includes wildlife management and tree clearing. That's two thousand dollars. Aero main miscellaneous is the airport share of TSA. So we have law enforcement, we have to pay them. TSA only reimburses us a small amount, so we pay the rest of it. And that's sixty-six thousand a year that we pay for, to make our airport in compliance with TSA. If we add another carrier out there with more seats than the fifty and we go to the next level, that number will more than double. So, just, if we get a Allegiant back in here or a seventy-seater regional jet that I've been working on, then that number will go up, but so will our revenues for, for things like, under the PFCs that we get and some of the other operating costs. Air traffic and operations, this is the HVAC, the roof, the cleaning. This is their normal maintenance wear and tear that we, last year we budgeted thirty and we've dropped it down a little bit this year due to some major repairs that we made last year. We shouldn't have some of those expenses. Non-aeronautical utilities, those are for the old terminal building. Those, I believe, get reimbursed, don't they, from Piedmont? The, the old terminal building.
Utilities get reimbursed.
Yeah, they are, they are reimbursed later in our revenues from rents collected from Piedmont and FAA. That, I think, we're getting into revenue. Matt knows that better than I do. Because it gets complicated with some of the things, so that goes through all of our expenses.
Any questions from anyone that right now is...
Yeah, I might miss the answer or...
Yes, sir.
When you first started, Joe, when you first started, you said that the ARF figures were way off. What's the anticipation of difference? More?
Not, not way off, two percent and they reduced me point four or five percent. So it'll be a net gain of two point four or five percent.
Okay, all right, so it's going to be an increased cost?
Increased cost of two point four or five percent of what's on there. Somehow, something got lost in translation.
Okay.
So, that's a contractual agreement.
Yeah, I understand. Any other questions?
Okay. All right, so revenue, you want to walk through?
Sure. Pretty much all the revenue accounts are the same as last year. The only big difference is the miscellaneous revenue. You see where it was four, 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 four hundred and four thousand last year. That was due to a reimbursable expense that was only for last year. And that's why there's the ninety-seven percent difference. But if you go through all the other revenue accounts, they're pretty much similar next year as they are this year.
Well, except for the transfer from the county, that's a little...
Oh, yes, that's a little, big difference there.
It's about four hundred thousand, four hundred, yeah. Because it was two hundred thousand, because we cut it back some, so I think it's four hundred and twenty-two thousand bigger this year, so.
Yes.
I mean, it seems that, you know, looking at the actuals of eighteen and I assume the actuals of nineteen, revenue's heading up some. It's just not heading up as much as expenses. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct. And until we get some new tenants in here that can generate revenue, which we're hopeful this year, the drone facility will definitely generate revenue and so will a new FBO. It'll drive fuel sales up. It will also have lease payments. And then we've got hangar rents that are going up this year a little bit, not much. But most of that's to recapture our costs to paint and pave and to set aside for the next time it needs painting and paving. The rental cars at the, well, it's not bottom of your page probably. So, just so you know, that revenue is extremely low. That has not been renegotiated in fifteen years. They've not had a CPI in fifteen years. So I've met with one of the three companies and I meet with the other two in the next few weeks. And we will have a different pay scheme and revenue and profit sharing for that in addition.
Is that the twelve thousand number or the eleven nine hundred number, eleven nine eighty?
That's rent. They've not had a rent increase, the eleven thousand.
Yeah, what are you talking?
The profit sharing is, is the next item, which is two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
So that will go up as well?
That will go up as well. Nothing has gone up since two thousand, since fifteen years ago, two thousand ten, four? Okay, whenever the last one was done. The other thing that we have asked for is CFCs. Those are concession fund. Let's see, PFCs are passenger facility charges. So this is concession facility charges. Most airports, BWI and other airports, it's legal in our state. The legislation is there. So you will see that request come before council to put that into legislation. That is like a two-dollar fee onto each car per day. And it will help pay for things at the airport that are not being paid for, for rental car services, such as parking lots and paving and things of that nature. The facility that they need for storage that we put into our thing would pay for those types of things. And it can also be used for things other than rental car. It's just another revenue stream that was not being collected at our airport. And until I started working with the lease agreements, we didn't realize we weren't getting it, so.
Just out of curiosity, go on. Either one of those three rental car companies is one to dominate? I mean, is it one that does most of the business or are they all somewhat equal or?
They're pretty much the same. Yeah, the revenues are the same for all three.
Just curious.
And vending machines, that's our revenue. That's pretty stable. Terminal area, vehicle parking, that will go up in my CIP. I think we kicked it out another year, but when we put the automated system in, we're only getting, what percent do we get? Matt?
It's a, it's a graduated rate. So it's like the first hundred thousand, we get forty percent and then the percentage goes up as, their profit goes up.
So we would get a hundred percent of that profit with an auto pay system. I put it in the CIP to buy and then it would have a small maintenance contract with it. And then we would get a hundred percent instead of the small percentages. And most airports do that. This is a very archaic way of doing the parking lot, so we'll get that done. The CIP also has the resurfacing on there so that we can do a public-private partnership and put solar in there once it's been resurfaced. And then it will pay not only for all of our electricity at the airport, but we can, after five years, we can sell that and make another profit and be revenue generating.
You, on the vending machine, apparently you have a restaurant out there now?
Yes, sir.
They're not, they're not generating any income?
No, sir.
No? What, is there a zero contract or?
No, sir. They have, they are a concession. They have a lease right now that they have a minimal, you, you, you looked at that? You, you, you looked at that contract, um...
It's been a while ago, I'll find a refresh.
Yeah, I know, we're getting ready to redo it, I'm trying to remember what it says now because we set it up for food trucks and we didn't do food trucks. And, um, so right now they pay, um, a certain amount of comp meals, um, for the use of the facility. They are not making any money yet, um, they're still operating at a loss. So instead of my paying out of the county's money when I do buy a lunch for somebody, they comp it. And that, that is for business meetings.
About how many comps a month?
Max is eight.
Eight comps?
No, a quarter, not a month, a quarter.
A quarter?
Quarter.
So I need to, I need to buy more of those fourteen-dollar Rubens?
Yeah, I'm only gonna bring that up, Bill.
It will, that, their business should start to kick off. They started in October, which is our slow time and pilots don't get out and fly their little airplanes. Um, we have a gate system set up for them now, we have parking designated for them now, now that they've finished paving and marking the entire airport. Um, so now that the weather's better, we can get an email blast out to invite pilots to come fly in and have their hundred-dollar hamburger, which is really a Ruben, at, at, um, Rosenfeld. So we're hoping they will turn a profit so we don't lose them.
But they close like at four, don't they, something like that?
As soon as they get their other license, um, alcohol license, then they will be open from six AM to seven-thirty PM.
Then the pilots can really have...
They can really have, yes, sir. And I don't work for the FAA anymore, so I don't have to regulate that.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's important, uh, you know, you have to have those amenities at the airport.
It's required, yeah. Uh, we have to have food there. Um, the vending machines were horrible, the food in it made people sick. Um, I, they just, that vending room, if you ever went in there, it was green more than any other color. Anyway, we just, the only vending we have currently are soft drinks and, uh, M&amp;M's and chips, stuff like that. Yeah, I required the M&amp;M's. Um, tea hanger rental, that's going up because of the rent increases. Um, and the last thing, I don't know what that is, purchase card rebate. I guess we spend a lot of money and we get a percentage back. That'll go up because this year we've been moving more towards the, the purchase card, which is such a blessing in all these requisitions. Okay, any other questions?
Any questions from anyone?
Mr. President, I have just a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, and going back and looking at your expenses, Dawn?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I see that you added a new line item for contractual services. Um, how is that different than the professional services?
Do you know what page it is, Laura?
It's on page two oh five.
That's a snow removal contract. So in the past, um, we had housekeeping that used to shovel the walkways and the roadway out to the parking lot and after the lawsuit, if you recall, we determined that that was not sufficient, so we got a contractor to plow the, um, parking lot, take care of the underneath where all the snow gets tracked in, to put up the barriers to s- snow shovel and salt the walkways. And, um, they parked their snow equipment in the parking lot last year and they were there. We actually budgeted last year twenty thousand, not knowing, you know, when you read how much they charge you by the hour and do so much, we know now what that looks like and we, we're guessing about ten thousand a year.
Uh, and my other question is, um, for your leases, um, I noticed that, uh, we have a whole new fund set up in our budget for leases. Are your leases shown within your budget, the airport's budget, because you're an enterprise account, does that...
My car, you're talking about my car leases? Or the vehicle, or the trailer lease for RF? Those are my main leases that I'm aware of.
It's the capital lease vehicle.
Vehicles, those are new, we've always owned our vehicles, they're ten years old and we just replaced them with the leases.
Enterprises, enterprise funds pay for them.
Enterprise.
But this is in her budget because she's an enterprise account, is that correct?
That's true.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Only when I have, what are the two timelines that you see for the, for the UAS and the FBO and the airport extension?
Okay, the runway extension is if FA approves everything, as we think we have an agreement for them to approve. We are doing accelerated funding that requires us to forward fund, so if we don't forward fund, that's a different answer. If we for- if we forward fund, I would expect us to be digging dirt by the end, very end of twenty-twenty, first of twenty-twenty-one.
And, but what would the, how long would that process take?
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months total?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so in about twenty-two, twenty-three?
Yeah, twenty-two, we should be operational by twenty-two. The, the bridges and the delays, um, uh, twenty-twenty-eight or fifteen-mile queues, we will far exceed them ever getting a bridge even designed or even thought of, we will be operational.
What about the UAS building and the FBI?
The UAS, um, we have to go back to hearing, so I can't answer that until I know if I have funding.
Okay, and then the FBO?
We're still in discussions, I don't have a contract.
Okay, okay.
When I have a contract, I'll know.
Is it busy, right?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All right, well... We appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Did you bring any of that fish with you?
I did not.
Cornbread?
No, it's gone.
I gotta, I gotta talk to Charlotte about that. My wife's recipe's good, but that was...
That was banging.
Good morning. Thanks for coming in, uh, a little early.
Not a problem.
We got ahead of ourselves for once. Um, what we normally do is just let, allow you to give us an overview, we don't necessarily need a line item, line by line. I think a lot of times what we're mostly concerned about is where we've seen savings and, and where we've seen additional expenses.
Remember, Joe?
Correction.
We'll catch you on twenty-one. Twenty-one?
Forty-one.
Twenty-one, page one oh five. Well, we were able to have a, a budget that was less than last year's. Uh, there are some additions, we added, um, converting MCOs to ma- master correctional officers to sergeants to give some of our more senior staff places to go. We added a transportation officer position, uh, that's correctional officer that was unfunded prior to that and that was based upon the excellent time and motion study done by the county auditor. We added a, another maintenance tech. The building isn't getting any younger and unfortunately that brings with it a certain amount of, uh, maintenance issues have to be taken care of. I'm a, a, a simple sort of person, so you'll see that I consolidated some, a lot of different line items into one line item. For example, medical, uh, instead of hospital doctors, drugs, equipment, supply, staffing, dental staffing, I just pushed it all up into medical. And so wherever you see that some line items have just disappeared, it's going to be because I consolidated them into a single line item with the permission of the, the office of finance.
Um, you were talking about this, positions before.
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
How's it going with filling positions? I know in the past few years it's been a lot of competition.
We have four open positions now and that's all.
So there was what, there was a ten last year or something like that, so...
Yeah, we've had over a dozen at, at certain points. Um, Ruth has done an excellent job in terms of filling those positions and getting the right people in place.
My only question was in your salaries overtime and your premium overtime, a lot seemed to be going on there as far as, you know, reductions and maybe transfers of costs. I just was curious as to, because in salaries overtime, it goes from two hundred thousand to fifty, which is a substantial difference, but in sali- salaries premium overtime, it goes from three eighty-four to six hundred and one thousand. So I'm kind of was wondering what, what happened in those, whether one had an impact on the other. And I really am not aware of what premium overtime is as opposed to regular overtime, is that special hours or something?
Premium overtime is what our line staff gets, they're hourly paid, so they get time and a half for every hour worked. We have some staff that fall, the lieutenants that fall under exemption seven K of the, uh, FLSA. So they get what's called regular overtime, so for a certain amount of time, they get paid straight time over forty hours and then after they reach a certain limit, then they get time and a half.
That's like fifty-some hours, isn't it?
Yeah, it's forty-six, yes.
So, um, when I see that salaries overtime went from two hundred thousand to fifty thousand, did we save a hundred and fifty thousand? Was that transferred, did you re-categorize it as premium overtime?
We re-categorized that.
Okay.
Because the actual in twenty-eighteen was so high of premium overtime that we wanted to try and, and do a number that was more realistic for the upcoming budget year. The unfortunate fact is, is that whether we have vacancies or not, right now I have one person in the hospital that's two officers on overtime who have to work over at the hospital.
And I think with the flex shifts that you all have, you're, you're subject to the same, um, series of circumstances the sheriff's department is as well.
Yes, sir.
That's how I see it, yeah.
Yes, sir.
So how is the inmate, is the inmate population declining? You know, I know Maryland's, you know, working on...
It was declining, it has been trending up in the last three months. Uh, we were averaging two ninety-seven, uh, it was three seventeen yesterday, three eighteen today. So at this point, it's trending slightly upward, I don't know if that trend will continue or whether it's a blip.
And I seem to recall you, we took a tour a couple of years ago, um, of the facility and half the people or more, their waiting trial, is that correct? Or is that...
Correct, or more, yes, sir.
So, um, is there, you know, I guess if there are fewer inmates, you might need fewer people, you know, theoretically, you know, if, if the number reaches a certain level, um...
If it reaches a certain level, yes. Uh, one thing that I would like council to understand is that the number has gone down, the danger level has gone up. While we have three hundred and seventeen people incarcerated, we have over three hundred people who are on what's called pre-trial monitoring. They're actually released into the community but being monitored by detention center staff while they're in the community. Some of them have brace, electronic bracelets, some of them don't. So what's happened is, is that our population has relatively remained static as, with regard to the number of people we're supervising, it's just where we are supervising them. So now we've got about half our population being supervised in the community. Half that remains incarcerated, and this was the purpose of the Justice Reinvestment Act, are the ones that need to be incarcerated, they're pre-trial because they have no bond because either they have committed a crime that is so violent or so dangerous or because they have some sort of mental illness or something that makes them a danger to the public or themselves if they were released. So the ones that we do have tend to be more hardcore than in the past.
I know recidivism is usually high. Um, the ones that you have, the population that you have being monitored in the, in public, I guess, do you see them getting in trouble again while they're out?
I'd say about twenty percent of them get in trouble again while they're out.
Does that seem high to you?
It's not terribly high, uh, you would actually expect that if they were going to be career care emeralds, that number would be higher because they'd be determined to do wrong, no matter who was watching them.
I would've thought you would've said a bigger number than that.
It's about twenty, I would say it's about twenty percent. Um, and often they'll be reincarcerated while they're on pre-trial and we, we take them off pre-trial and it's like, welcome, welcome back, we left the lights on for you.
That's right. How much time resource do you have to devote to mental health issues and, and things like that? Is that increasing, I would assume?
Yes, uh, in December of last year, forty-seven percent of the inmates that were incarcerated at my facility were on some sort of psychotropic medication.
What percent?
Forty-seven percent. Was thirty-nine percent when in February. So the number is fluctuating between somewhere around the forty to fifty percent mark, somewhere in that area.
So I wonder if the medications are working?
I think that they're being stabilized and maintained, which is the best outcome that can be hoped for within a detention center.
I see you've, uh, you're, you're making a huge investment, sixty thousand in computer equipment. Is that primarily just, um, new office equipment or just curious?
Primarily, uh, according to IT, our facility has the oldest computers left in the county. We may have some of the oldest people in the county, so that may not matter, but we do need to start moving forward.
I thought we had the oldest.
No, no, IT, y'all, y'all have nice services, I've been looking at those while I was up here.
Okay, I was just, that was, that was about it, really, it's just, that answers it. Any other questions?
Any long-term, long-term, what we could look for in the next couple of years, some, some projects that you would like to see done that you haven't addressed yet with the county or with the exec? Well, I mean, if you have talked to exec, that's fine too, right?
We hope at some point to resurface the floors, uh, throughout the detention center. They have not been resurfaced or epoxied in thirty years, so their, their, the concrete does show a lot of signs of wear, but the, the county has been really very good at, at helping us maintain our, our CIP. We've got a project going on now to resurf- to resurface the shower areas, we've got the roof project, which I hope will start before I die and...
I was noticing the electric bill, is there any, any room out there for, um, solar? Yeah, I was, I was no- I just happened to be looking, I said, wow, look, look at the cost of utilities.
You know, there might be, I've never thought of that.
You know, utilities, electric, two hundred and ten thousand dollars with the amount of, I don't know how much land's left out there. You know, a roof space or whatever, you know, just a thought.
No, that's a, that's a good thought.
That would be sweet.
Yeah, we, we have the one field up, uh, in Delmar that saves us about forty thousand a year, locking in a cheaper rate. Um, yeah, that, that's definitely something we can look into. Um, there's a lot of private entities out there that are trying to, would like us to enter into power purchase agreements and, um, you know, we, we, I, I think we need an energy expert in that regards to see, all right, are we locking in? And if you have it like you're proposing right next to the building, you're not paying the distribution cost of Delmarva Power or Chop.
We need to be careful with our energy experts, we know where that's at.
Yeah.
Correct, correct, so, um, not, not being an expert in that myself, um, it's about finding the right person or, or company that can help point us in the right direction. Because I, I do think there's lots of efficiencies there and that, that's a really good point with the size of our building. I know talking about the roof, they have a three-acre roof.
Yeah.
That's something that we need to take care of and, um...
If we could farm that bad boy, that would be great.
Yeah, but they got a lot of slade area, you know, some ground mounts or, it's much cheaper if you do ground mounts. Roots could be a problem.
Yeah, especially when you need to work on the roof.
Right, yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Anyway, just a thought.
No, that's a good thought.
There used to be a lot of revenue that used to come in from the federal government, I don't know if it's part of the ICE program or not. And, uh, is that, I didn't see any revenue stream along that, is that completely, has that been eliminated?
Yes, I don't think there's been an ICE contract, um, before I was here, or the last time, so over ten years ago, I think.
Worcester does a ICE contract.
Yes, they do.
I had forgotten about it and, but then in just going over this, uh, the other night, I was thinking, oh, you know, that, that used to be an issue. I remember they started cutting back, so...
So the ICE office locally in our county, they transport all their arrestees to Worcester County?
Yes.
Because I think, um, President Cannon is right, this, the detention center used to hold a lot of...
We did.
I think they went to a female at one time, called Female.
I believe they did, but we did have, we did have ICE prisoners for quite some time, I was there for that.
Would that be worth considering to try to maybe, uh, to get that contract back or, I, I don't know A through Z on it. I don't know if it... I don't know if it would be worthwhile to try to seek that out.
Anything that would produce revenue would be worth considering. ICE comes with a set of standards which are very stringent and exceed those of Maryland Corrections. For example, seven days a week recreation. You're not allowed to use air tasers or other electrical devices on any of their inmates. So there are certain standards that would be required by ICE that would involve a cost to the county to accommodate. So I would look at it carefully.
Sure. Obviously, they're not coming from Guantanamo.
They are not, apparently not.
There's, there's pitfalls to it.
Yes, there, there are, there are significant pitfalls.
Good, any other questions? Yes, Josh?
Just back to the, the overtime premium.
Yes, sir.
Regular, is about 8% of your total budget, is that, is that standard for similar facilities or overtime?
Yes.
It sounds like you said you addressed it last year or pretty, last couple of years. It sounds like you've been addressing it, I don't know the full extent there, but.
Well, in Caroline, our overtime was approximately 10% of our budget. But it was a smaller facility, but even with less staff, whenever you have any sort of a medical emergency or you have any type of detention center emergency where you have to call in additional staff, then the overtime usage is inevitable. Because we can't just close a post and say, we're not going to put anybody in the guard tower tonight.
You gotta have incentive for them to come in.
Yes.
And I don't know if you've said it already, for my own curiosity, what's the, the increase in postage? What are you mailing out? It's gone from 2,400 in 2016 to executive budget of 8,000?
Page 113.
Page 113. Just curious, not really.
Well, I know we're mailing out a lot more bills to clients who don't want to pay in the pre-trial. And there have been a significant, a significant increase in correspondence on require, our freedom of information requests from a variety of news media and from attorneys. There's also been some, a postage that's been required with regard to some civil claims where information had to be mailed to a variety of attorneys.
That's a lot of mailing.
It is a lot of mailing.
Yeah.
I have, yes, ma'am. So I know that you mentioned that you're combining a lot of your accounts.
Yes, ma'am.
And it looks like your meetings and seminars, well, starting with local travel, actually, and then a lot of the meetings and seminars, hotel fees, travel, meals. Did you combine them into a new account or are you eliminating those?
We combined them and I believe we combined them all into.
Looks like training.
Training external.
Training external.
Okay, so that's what that is, okay.
Any other questions? I'm good. We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Oh, sorry, one last question.
One more.
Sir?
I was just looking at, I think you mentioned briefly, but the drug testing? I was trying to follow the combined accounts, but from the, now at a budget FY '19, 55,000. Then nothing in the 20 budget, but then it was 11,000 year before, all up and down. I'm not sure what was up with that. Page 114, inmate drug, expenses, drug testing. Anything you wanted to say on that?
Inmate drug testing, we went from not using dip cups to using the Thermo Fisher urine screen testing. And I'm not, I can't answer on the previous years as to where the budgeting went for inmate drug testing. It had to come out of something. But since it was dip cups, it could have been purchased out of the inmate welfare fund or out of inmate expenses. Because it wasn't specifically urine testing like as it is now. So we broke that out to make it its own line item.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, we appreciate you taking the time to come in.
No problem, thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll break for lunch. Is, is.
The class is coming at 12:30 now instead of 1:00.
Okay, and where are we with the volunteer fire?
Last I checked with Lisa, there was no notices to know where they could come home. Oh, wait, yeah, they are coming.
Coming early?
They're coming at 1:00 now.
Great, thanks, okay, perfect. All right, well, take a recess.